Good morning, everyone, and welcome. Glad to have you participate in our county government. And I will call the Board of Commissioners work session for February 22nd order at this time. And Rodney, if you bring the list forward, I'd like to recognize elected officials. Sheriff Gullidge, always good to have you in the house. And we've got an interim DA back there standing beside the chair. Thanks, sir. I'd like to recognize Matthew Rollins. So if you've got your mobile devices still on, it'd be a good time to silence them. We're just thrilled to have Pastor Jeffrey Windbusch with us here from Sweet Home Missionary Baptist Church, who I just learned this morning, he comes all the way from Henry County to just to pray for us and lead us in the pledge. So Pastor Windbusch, if you'd come forward and take care of that, we'd appreciate it. Stand if you're able.
Thank you, Chairman. Let us pray. Our Father and I return to God again. We have come with bowed heads, humble hearts, gratefulness, God, for another day's journey. We thank you for our lying down and our early morning arising. Once again, do this call us to bow our head between the locks of our shoulders and summon your presence. As we come with this prayer of invocation, God, we believe you're everywhere present at the same time. But the invitation is given for you to come in and lead and guide us, God. Continue to watch over this county as it continue to grow. Pray you expand the leadership's vision. Pray you expand their hearts and their spirits. Pray you watch over the officers, the firemen, God, and all of those who serve in public service. Keep us all, be with us all, lead us all from earth to glory. This is our servant's prayer. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Jeffrey. We appreciate you. The minutes from the February 8th, 2022 work session in the February 20, in the February 8th, 2022 board meeting minutes are available for your review. They're on the back table. Today for our team Paulding segment, we're going to hear a little bit about the advanced life support vehicles. So we'll roll that. Thank you, Mr. Harkins.
I'm happy to announce the launch of our advanced life support program. This is a major enhancement to the way we treat sick and injured patients.
And in late 2021, we were granted advanced life support capability by the state of Georgia and launched the first two ALS quick response vehicles, paramedic response vehicles, if you will. In November of 2021, Rescue 4 went in service. That was the first ALS vehicle in the county. And in December of 2021, we launched Rescue 11, the second ALS quick response vehicle. And in 2022, we're looking at launching two more of them.
We currently have two of these quick response advanced life support units in service. They're staffed with a total of six paramedics. We have several additional part-time paramedics, and we have another six that are currently in paramedic school to staff these units.
Our advanced life support units will be able to respond countywide. We have advanced lifesaving equipment that we hadn't had for 40 years to respond here in the county.
All of our other trucks here are basic life support, which means they have the capability to do simple oxygen therapy, automated external defibrillators, CPR, simple bandaging. These trucks are staffed with paramedics and have the capability to do cardiac monitoring, which can allow them to identify an irregular heart rhythm and restore it back to a regular perfusing rhythm. They can identify patients that are having active myocardial infarctions or heart attacks in the field. They can then send that information immediately to the hospital and have a physician give an evaluation of that patient from the scene. They can treat aggressive airway concerns when someone's not able to breathe well on their own. They can do advanced airway techniques and put tubes directly into lungs to help them breathe until they can get to the hospital. They can treat a variety of medical conditions, diabetic-related problems, strokes, seizures, and of course, any aggressive level trauma for a patient that has a severe injury. They have several capabilities to treat those injuries before someone can get to the hospital.
So this gives us capabilities that we have never had responding to medical calls in Paulding County. This is really elevating the standard of care that we can provide to our citizens. And frankly, this is a big deal for Paulding County going to the ALS level.
Just a couple of days ago, we had a patient who was suffering from chest pain. They activated the 911 system. We had one of our basic life support apparatuses respond, and one of our ALS or advanced life support rescues respond with them, along with Metro Atlanta Ambulance Service. We were able to arrive on the scene, do an assessment of the patient. It was determined that patient was suffering from a severe cardiac problem. They were treated by our ALS crews on the scene, transported to the hospital, where they were taken into the cardiac catheterization lab, where they were, they did find a major blockage in an artery in the heart. That blockage was able to be cleared, and that patient is doing well and expected to make a full recovery.
I'm very proud of all of our personnel with all the training that they've done. They're highly skilled at running calls and the, all the medical training they've had to have. We have paramedics now, and I believe it's a real great advancement for all the citizens of Paulding County. And I'm very proud of our personnel. If it wasn't for our personnel and all their hard work, we wouldn't be able to accomplish this.
Awesome. That's exciting, Chief Pelfry. If you'll come up and add a little bit of further education for us. Glad you're here.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yeah, this is pretty significant. It's something we've been planning on doing for quite a long time, especially when 2020 hit with the COVID, running a lot of calls. And in 2021, we ran 18,681 calls. That's an 11% increase from 2020. I've laid some charts there on your desk for you to review. So we, back in 2019, we started seeing that this was going to be an issue. We had to get some pieces in place. We started doing our EMS division and got it going. And with that, they started creating all the protocols, pharmacy license, training, medical director. We had a lot to do. And you can't do that without good people. And so we've made Tim Kings here. He's our division chief of EMS. Tim, stand up, please. Lisa Lewis is our EMS coordinator and trainer and deputy chief, Brandon Newsom. He didn't want to, but Brandon, stand up. He had a lot to do with this. Those three were the main cogs in getting this started and working very hard. We did have support, of course, from, from you, the Board of Commissioners and our Fire Advisory Board. And along with that, we've got our personnel, paramedics, that we've got some going to school now. We are, I think we have six that are going to be graduating hopefully this year. So that'll give us a chance to put some more ALS units in service. In 2021, 1,087 of our calls were cardiac calls. That's a lot of calls for cardiac. And we got a lot of people that live here in the county, and there's a need for them to get better care. And we've recognized that. And as I said in the video, you can't do that without good help. You've got to have all your pieces in place. And I couldn't be more proud of all of our personnel, everything they've done. They kept a great attitude. We had a near seamless transition. We've happened to work with Metro Ambulance. We have a lot of the same equipment they do, working with them. They've had a rough time, along with the hospitals, with all the influx of calls, which allows us to get out on the scenes and do more on the scenes before they arrive there. So it's a win-win for us, and we're very excited about it. You know, our, our main thing we were trying to focus on was respiratory, cardiac, and trauma. And I believe we've done that. We've hit those, and we're going to continue to grow. We're seeing this as a success. The quick response vehicles have done very well for us. So we're very excited about it. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give all of them a good hand. Next on the agenda is the, the presentation of two Public Safety Appreciation Awards. And I'm going to do the second one, but we have a firefighter here on our panel who several years with a fire department. And that's mine?
That would be yours.
Okay. All right. Just do them out of order here? Okay. So the first award goes to John Wick. And Mr. Wick, if you would come forward.
Ryan first.
Oh.
Yes, we're doing yours first.
Yeah, we're doing yours first.
Come on up, John.
So I'll let you speak first, and then I'll read the award.
All right. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I think it's 2/22/22, so happy Tuesday to y'all. Brian, I give all of y'all a book. I was going to put some pictures in yours, but I forgot about it, so I'll work on you later. If y'all would, I'd like to read a letter that's, Major Robert Davis is over our Criminal Investigation Division. This is Detective John Wick right here, and he wrote a letter nominating him for this award. Wants to recognize him for outstanding work and good attitude. Ever since he began his career in the Criminal Investigation Division, Detective Wick has fit right in with their team. He also brings over 27 years of law enforcement experience with him here. In addition to a long career in the military and reserves, John also attended Georgia Military College and holds an associate's degree in criminal justice. He's always willing to go the extra mile to get the job done. When needed, he will come in early, he will stay late, and he always does his best to bring a positive end to the cases that he's assigned. He has extensive experience in property crimes and upon shop details. He's adept at online investigation techniques and traditional investigation techniques alike. He's also made it a point to establish a good relationship with the pawn shops in the county, which is vital for successful follow-up on stolen property cases. John began his job here with the Paulding County Sheriff's Office in the fall of 2020, following an extensive law enforcement career with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office and the Cobb County Police Department. Through his diligent investigation efforts, Detective Wick's been able to recover a remarkable amount of stolen property and make many arrests since he's been here with the Paulding Sheriff's Office. We're fortunate to have him as part of our team here at the SO. Even though retirement might seem attractive to John after already establishing such an extensive career, he enjoys his work and is appreciative of the opportunity and currently services in Paulding County. Respectfully submitted from Major Robert Davis. I'd also like to thank Texas Roadhouse. They've donated a state dinner for two. John, if you want to carry me out to lunch, we'll go have a state dinner, so I'll give you this. But they're, they're always big in supporting public safety here. If y'all would join me and congratulate Detective John Wick.
Y'all will just turn around right here. I'm going to read the award. I'm going to stand up so this can go out to the people that watch at home. Public Appreciation Award to, is presented to John Wick in recognition of outstanding service to his community, presented by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners this 22nd day of February 2022, and all of us have signed it. Rebecca's going to do the pictures.
She wanted to throw me off the couch. She's going to go back to work. Come on. Make more time to do it.
Can't fit everyone. She's got to be up there.
Come over here, right here.
And the Board of Commissioners would like to present Public Safety Appreciation Award to Captain Mark Morgan with the Fire Department.
Right in the center. For his professional achievement and superior performance, it's my pleasure to recognize Captain Mark Morgan for the Public Safety Appreciation Award. Captain Morgan's been instrumental with the development and progress of the department from the time he became a volunteer in 1995 and through his years as a career firefighter. Although many tasks that firefighters are assigned daily are considered as part of doing the job, Captain Morgan has always gone that extra step to ensure the safety of his coworkers while protecting the citizens of Paulding County. During his career, Captain Morgan has set a positive example in the department that is unmatched only by a few of his peers. During his time as a firefighter with Paulding County, he has shown uncompromising compassion and concern for his fellow firefighters, teaching recruit school in his early years, I think four of them, right? Maybe five? Quite a few. And later, researching and developing educational classes for safer fire ground operations. Just this past year, Captain Morgan showed a special devotion to the youth of the county by volunteering to teach fire safety education and receiving outstanding reviews from their parents as well as the teachers. Captain Morgan has always been committed to his job and deserves our recognition. Captain Morgan, daily, his daily judgment and actions reflect great credit upon himself and are in keeping with the highest traditions of the fire service. Mark will be retiring March, March the 3rd, and that's why we're here today and did two Public Safety Awards. I was afraid I wasn't going to be able to get him in next month. He'll be retiring after 27 years of service. He started in 95 as a volunteer and came in 97, I believe, for his career. He's had, been an absolute joy to work with. We started as firefighters together. I think there was only about 10 or 12 of us, and Mark was one of them. And he's been fantastic to work with. He's always cared for about the department and where it was going. And I couldn't be more proud to have worked with him and called him a friend. And Mark, wish you nothing but the best of luck in your next chapter of your life. Thank you.
I'm going to. Mark's, he's not just a fireman to me, he's a personal friend of mine. He helped me pick up my kids' cars, and we played golf together. I think he got tired of looking in the woods for my balls. He don't call me anymore. But anyway, if you're one of those that hits them in the woods, call me. We'll, we'll get along good. This award is presented to Mark Morgan in recognition of his outstanding service to his community, presented to the, by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners this 22nd day of February 2022. Thank you, Mark. Congratulations. In bid awards, we have four. Number two, item number two is to award the SPOLOST purchase of 15 2022 Ford interceptor SUVs to Hardy Family Ford in the amount, to purchase them from Hardy Family Ford in the amount of $472,906. Our finance director, Ms. Tabitha Pollard, to describe.
Good morning. Time flies. It seems like we were just purchasing these, but we, it's that time again. So the sheriff's office has requested to replace 15 interceptors. And as you know, we have the state contract pricing, and then Hardy usually matches that state contract pricing. So they've done that again this year. So we're asking for authorization to purchase those 15 interceptor vehicles, and those will be purchased with SPOLOST funds.
So moving to number three is the SPOLOST purchase of five 2022 Ford Explorers to Hardy Family Ford in the, in the amount of $153,585.
Several years ago, we began to replace some of our vehicles with admin vehicles, so not the police interceptor component. These are a little bit less expensive, and they've requested to purchase five of those from Hardy as well, again, comparing to the state contract pricing.
This would be a good time to remember how valuable the SPOLOST, the special purpose local option sales tax is, that one penny on the dollar. And a lot of it comes from people that live in counties surrounding Paulding County. And that renewed vote will come up in November, so just want to keep it on everybody's minds and thoughts, how, how this money is spent and used. So number four is to approve the Microsoft enterprise software agreement for software purchasing, an amount of $891,623 to the lowest responsive bidder, SHI.
This bid, we had an award in December for this bid, and it was for the Microsoft licenses that operate our computers, so your Word, Excel, and other components that make everyday operations happen. That, we had a little bit of a, in this renewal, we had to go back and do an audit of all of the licenses. And sometimes those are hard to count because we have computers, and we want to make sure we're only purchasing what we need to. So we did an audit. Those numbers changed throughout the last bid, and the bidder that was awarded the project in December couldn't award, could not honor their bid once it was awarded. And so they came back at, at an increased price. And we thought to be fair, we would just throw it out, use our audited numbers of licenses that we needed, and put it back out. And we had a little bit more competition this time. So that's what we did. That's why it says we're replacing the 12-7 award. We had three bidders. Two of them were non-responsive because of the lack of a bid bond. And so now we're off, we're asking for award SHI. SHI has carried the Microsoft licenses for the past two, two, two awards, and we award for three-year contracts. So this amount is paid over a three-year time period. This one did see quite an increase. That increase is due to the increased number of licenses. Microsoft changed the way they, the licenses are sold to us, so every component of technology has to have license now, where you would think it would be just the end users, but it's not. So we have, our number of licenses have increased pretty significantly. This amount is over budget. It's not, it's over what we had anticipated, but IT, Wiggam lines, the IT director believes he can bring it in within his budget in other areas. Unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Tabitha. Okay, we're going to bring up the bearded part of the next agenda item. Item number five is to award the turf mowing contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Kelly Landscape Management, in the amount of $199,422.64. So Mr. Jones joined at the podium, and we're here from just you?
Okay. I'm assuming you're referring to me.
Yes.
All right. Good morning. The FY 2022 Right-Away Turf Maintenance Service Project was advertised by Finance Department and had a bid opening of February 4th, 2022. Three contractors submitted bids for this work. Due to unbalanced bid concerns with the low bid, which I sent an email to y'all, kind of explaining that out, we recommend awarding this bid to the next lowest bidder, which is Kelly Landscapes Management, in the amount of $199,422.64. This contract provides for right-of-way turf services essentially on grass areas, medians, roadside shoulders, on various county-owned and maintained roads. Over the years, we've installed sod on many roadway projects, and obviously with that type of investment, we want to keep the looking good, weed-free, and viable. The contract provides for finished mowing, string trimming, edging, and litter pickup on approximately 64.7 acres of turf, areas of grass, medians, and shoulders. Also included are three cycles of fertilization and herbicide. The growing season, I call it the growing season, basically goes from mid-March through the end of October. Every two weeks, we'll be having the contractor to cut that, maintain those areas, essentially a total of 17 cycles. This contract, we modified it slightly for in the off-season, we're going to add three additional off-season litter pickup cycles on those 64.7 acres. And also, we have about 40 roadside shoulder miles added to that contract. I know the Board of Commissioners has put a premium on litter pickup and the preparedance of county roadways, so we have a mechanism now to actually have a contract go out and clean up areas, and those roads will be at our discretion. So if we see roads in post one, or post four, or post three, or post two that y'all like to pick up, we can add those and have those picked up. Like I said, again, the cost for all this work is $199,422.64. And this contract, if approved, it does have the option to be extended for two more years at our discretion if we're satisfied with the services. And that's pretty much all I have. And if you have any questions, I'd like to answer them.
George, did you review how the different roadways get prioritized?
But, you know, the, the 64.7 acres, it's typically the road projects that we've worked on over the years, like Bill Caruth Parkway, East Hare Parkway, Cedar Crest Road, we've got some areas, I believe, Seven Hills Connector, those roads. When it comes to the off-season litter pickup, we are picking up those areas that are on the turf contract, but also just, let's say there's a, Verge Valentine has a bunch of litter on it in the month of February of next year. We can go out and pick up that road, or whatever road, you know?
Any questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We have, Sheriff Gullidge is going to bring us an update from, from the sheriff's office. So Gary, thank you for being here today.
My pleasure. I said there's a lot of twos in today. It's 2/22/22, the second time I've been up here. I had two public safety awards, and it won't happen again for 200 years. I don't know about you, Brian, but I ain't going to be here in 2022/22. I'm going to make mine short and sweet. I know y'all got a lot of business to take care of. But while we're on the twos, if y'all don't mind, I'd like to tell you that two of your departments have been phenomenal to help us lately. And of course, I don't know why I continue to answer the phone, but I need to thank the public, Tara and Tabitha, finance and HR. I don't know why they even answer the phone, me and Chad calls, but thank y'all ladies for the hard work you and your employees do. We appreciate it. Don't go unnoticed. For the year 2021, the sheriff's year-end report, sheriff's office patrol 2,632 miles during the year of 2021. Total arrested was 2,205. We issued 1,792 traffic citations. We handled 49,558 complaints. Our higher volume calls was 4,370 alarms, 4,947 domestic disputes, 7,192 subpoenas and civil papers were served. We handled 6,829 suspicious incidents, 2,196 theft, potagals, burglaries, and enter-and-autos. Our guys performed 5,428 traffic stops, 98 DUIs. We cleared 3,394 warrants, performed 571 zone patrols. We had 954 juvenile incident reports, 583 of those were signed and 552 were charged. The detention center has always stayed busy. We booked in 1,660 during the year with an average population of 150. Our numbers is down, of course, due to COVID, and everybody's trying to stay away from as many people out of each other's face and as much as they can. Our transport division made 1,745 adult and 41 juvenile transports during the year. I gave y'all a book with all the total numbers of all the calls we did. You're welcome to look at it. As always, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, or I'm a phone call away, and all y'all have my cell number, so.
Sheriff Gullidge, I kind of hit you blind here, but you know how important I think the SPOLOST is. I just mentioned it, and, you know, we've kicked off with an article in the News and Views, but you're going to be a key figure and a key spokesperson for the SPOLOST. Do you have any comments you'd like to make today?
I do. Most all of our equipment, most of our vehicles are bulletproof vests, ammo guns. Everything we buy comes from SPOLOST. And I had a conversation with a lady during the last SPOLOST vote, and, you know, she was just adamant she wasn't going to vote for it. And I'm like, look, I said, we've still got to have this equipment, whether, what you know to decide is whether you want to pay for it yourself, just the county taxpayers, or you want to allow the people that shop in here in the county to help you pay for it. So it's been a good thing. It's been a good thing, the thing I like about it is, is all of us has to say upfront, what we're looking at doing, it's not something that comes in, it's like, okay, we've got this pile of money, let's go spend it on something. So, we actually tell the public beforehand what we're going to do with it, what our plans is with it. And I'm sorry that we wear out vehicles, but it's just the nature of the business, we have to, you know, I told this lady, I said, if you call us and you need nine-one-one, you want us to come in the car or bicycle? So, you know, and I worked here back in the early nineties when we drove junk, I mean, the cars we drove wouldn't even be safe to be on the street, so, and we've got a lot of employees and a lot of county equipment. I know that one time, all the yellow equipment in the county was just about dilapidated, the same way you don't want to pass them on the road for being unsafe, so we've got to replace this equipment and enable us to do our job.
Thank you kindly for those remarks.
My pleasure, thank y'all for your time.
We have no one who's signed up for public participation on agenda items. The consent agenda includes three items. Item number six is to authorize the chairman to approve the transfer of two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and, let me start over, two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-five cents, I'm sorry, that's square feet, just used to reading money. Authorize the chairman to approve the transfer of two thousand five hundred and thirty point nine-five square feet, which is point zero five eight acres of right-of-way to Georgia DOT for project number six-two-one-seven-two-zero, for a purchase price of one thousand eight hundred dollars. The item number seven is to accept the following streets for perpetual maintenance by the county. Woodland Crossing, located in post four, has four roadways there, Briar Way, Ridgewood Ray, Ridgewood Way, Woodford Place, and Woodland, and Woodland Court. Item number eight is declare the following item listed as surplus and approve their disposal through auction or trade. There are four items there that are listed, I'm not going to read them and all their serial numbers out, that information's located on the back table. So, would any of the commissioners like to move any of these three items forward to regular business this morning? Seeing no one who wishes to do that, we'll keep them on the consent agenda, and old business, we have none. Under new business, item number nine is discuss action to approve the May first, two thousand twenty-two Employee Benefits Plan renewal as presented. Ms. Palmer, thank you for being here to let us know about this exciting development. Thank you.
You're welcome, good morning. Currently, the staff is with Anthem. So, NFP went out to bid and got a quote back from Anthem. The original quote, the increase was twenty-six point three percent, so that was going to be almost a four million dollar increase. So, we went back to Anthem again, NFP did, and ask again, they were able to come down to a ten percent increase, would still be a one point five percent increase. So, we were very fortunate to receive a quote from Anthem, zero percent increase. So, if this is approved, this is the second year in a row that we can say that we have a zero percent increase for the commissioners and our employees. This plan is pretty much identical to the plan we have now. There is a lot more benefits, I think, as far as like the mental health component that they can offer our employees. I think there'll be little to no disruption. This quote included medical, dental, and vision. The other, we'll still have Aflac, our life insurance and disability will still be covered under Anthem at this time. But I think this will be a great move for our employees, actually, I'm really excited. The wellness fund is increasing by thirty thousand dollars that we'll be able to use for our employees' wellness. But I do think NFP worked really hard to get us a competitive quote, and it's been reviewed, and I think this will be a good move for our employees to go with that now. So, if you've got any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
New business number ten is discuss action to approve Resolution twenty-two dash zero seven, extending the moratorium of acceptance of residential rezoning requests until March the eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and Ms. Littman will give us an update.
Thank you. Back in December, you guys approved a moratorium on acceptance for residential subdivisions. That was to allow the community development staff to finish up our unified development ordinance, and we also kicked up our comprehensive plan update. We am proud to be presenting four out of the five titles of our unified development ordinance at this afternoon's planning commission. This is kind of an insurance policy, should you choose to adopt those sections with a favorable recommendation from the planning commission on two twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, that would be fine, and we would not have a need for a moratorium. But in an effort to perhaps gain more public comment, we would like to extend the moratorium and delay that adoption till May eighth, before the Board of Commissioners. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just to be clear, March eighth or May eighth?
March eighth, I keep saying May.
Thank you.
March eighth, three eight twenty-two.
Thank you, Ann. That's the conclusion of regular business this morning. Public participation on non-agenda items, we'll start with Ms. Scarlett Coglan. Ms. Coglan, if you'd come up, thank you for being here and going to speak on the senior center.
Yes, first of all, I wanted to tell you that I was very concerned, like most citizens, when I heard about that. I don't have a personal person there, I have a heart for seniors, I've worked a lot with seniors, and anyway, that's, I just wanted to come and just say how the community came together, we called, we stood up, we prayed, and I just wanted to thank God for working that out, and I wanted to thank y'all for listening to the citizens and doing the right thing, and I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coglan, appreciate the feedback. And we also have Ms. Angela O'Connor, the public, from the Public Defender's Office, and leads our Public Defender's Office very well, so we're glad to have you, Ms. O'Connor, come and speak today.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for allowing me this time to speak on behalf of the Public Defender's Office, most of which are here if they're not in court. I'm going to go over the, passed out of packet, kind of memorializing why we're opposed to moving our office, and I'm going to go over kind of the highlights of the packet. As most know, a criminal defendant's right to an attorney is found on the Sixth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which requires assistance of counsel for the accused in all criminal prosecutions. Specifically, how that translates to my office is individuals that are charged with misdemeanor and felony charges are entitled to attorney, and if they cannot afford an attorney, one is provided for them. So, therefore, the Public Defender's Office represents individuals that cannot afford an attorney that are entitled to. In this local circuit, the PD office represents at any given time approximately seventy, seventy to seventy-five percent of persons charged with crime in Superior Court, Juvenile Court, and Magistrate Court. There are twelve attorney positions currently slated for our office, but unfortunately, as of March first, I'm down four attorneys. That's a third of my attorney staff. Case loads are already high prior to these exits, and currently, we have one thousand five hundred and thirty-six files open, divided, now it's going to be divided amongst eight attorneys, for an average of one hundred ninety-two cases per attorney, if, once those four attorneys are gone. According to twenty, according to the two thousand twenty-two Paulding Judicial Superior Court master calendar, there are approximately forty-seven trials, trial weeks, forty-nine arraignments, fifty-nine plea, motion, probation calendars, and thirty-seven calendar call dates. Also, there is approximately twenty-four hearing dates in Magistrate Court, twenty-four bond hearing dates at the Paulding County Detention Center, fifty juvenile court dates, forty-eight drug court and mental health court dates each. So, let me get into a little bit of why, that's just kind of the background on what we do in the office, let me get into why we're opposed to moving locations. First off, and the biggest issue is security. In addition to physical security provided by courthouse security, we also have access to panic, 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 easy for me to say, buttons, one which alerts courthouse security, and the other dials straight to the nine-one-one center. There's also an active shooter button in our office, as well as throughout the courthouse. We often deal, as you probably imagine, with angry people, angry clients, they don't just get mad at the state, they get mad at us as well. And most often, they are impaired mentally or under the influence of drugs and alcohol when they come to, in general, and then when they come to our office. The clients that come to our office to meet with their attorneys are out on bond, ranging from anything from a traffic offense to murder. More clients than, like I said, more clients than not suffer from mental illness or addiction problems or both. Currently, our clients have to go through security, which results in attorneys' assurance that there are no weapons brought into the office. Furthermore, upon arrival to the office, the office is secured and only allows a client back after we've been able to observe them and feel comfortable with them coming back. My office, this office is, the PD's office is unique in that we are actually the ones that come in contact with the alleged offenders. There are oftentimes, clients get upset with us, and they become boisterous and aggressive. When this happens, we currently have deputies within the same building and that are able to assist us with the press of a button. Obviously, that wouldn't be the case off-campus. Just last week, I had to conflict out a longtime client of mine because both, it was brought to my attention that both my safety and my son's safety was at jeopardy, so we ended up conflicting him out, and so he's no longer in our office. But those are just kind of the examples or circumstances that we deal with on a daily basis. I think, just to sum it up, a move to an unsecure facility would leave the employees of the Public Defender's Office vulnerable, period, end of story. In order to provide effective representation to our clients, we must be equipped with adequate time and staff. Below are the reasons, and we're moving on from security, below are the reasons that relocating the PD's office will result in ineffective assistance of counsel. Yes, huh? Oh, okay. Well, apparently, my time is up, so everything else is written down, and I, myself and every single member of the Public Defender's Office is extremely against, opposed to moving, and thank you for my time.
If you want to hold on for a second, I'm going to make a motion that you be allowed to finish.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Till she finishes. Till she finishes.
Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate that. So, in addition to the security, we are also very concerned about the effectiveness that we're going to be able to represent our clients. A move off-campus would require the attorneys to travel to and from court campus multiple times a day. We don't, we go to court on one court or another every single day, usually morning and afternoon. We visit our clients in jail almost every day, if not every day. In addition to regular scheduled court dates, our attorneys are on-call for magistrate, superior, and juvenile courts. Magistrate and superior often expect us to come assist on cases at the last minute, we cannot be expected to do that if we're off-campus. In addition to regularly scheduled court dates, juvenile court holds detention hearings, and public defenders must be available to assist the juvenile. I listed some of the different types of court that we have daily, and how many attorneys that are needed for those appearances. Further, regularly, the judges, the Superior Court judges will direct the defendant to go to the Public Defender's Office and apply, then come back to the courtroom and let the judge know whether or not they're going to get a public defender. If our office is off-campus, obviously, we can't do that. And I believe that's in all three Superior Courts that happens. Administrative staff will need to travel to and from courthouse at least two times a day to file paperwork with the clerk of courts, deliver paperwork to, and pick up from, and do pickup from the judges' chambers. As I've already indicated, I'm down four attorneys, which is a third of my attorney staff, and I have also been informed that there will be some more leaving if we move For the reasons of, because, as y'all, as y'all probably know, we don't make any money. My attorneys that do this job because they are very passionate about what they do, and they don't do it for the money, but they already do have low salaries, coupled with extra gas money, obviously too high of caseloads account now, already short staff, security risks that the attorneys and staff will be exposed to, and most importantly, the lack of quality time that we'll have to communicate with our clients going back and forth off-campus. The alternatives to relocating, let me just go through some history here. Back in January, early part of January, I met with our county administrator, Mr. Baker, and myself and my chief assistant, and at that point in time, we were told that we were going to be moving to two forty Constitution Boulevard, which is currently elections. We were told in that meeting that the space situation regarding the upcoming state court was figured out until the ARPA funds came into play. Subsequently, I went and met with Mr. Green, thank you, Mr. Green, on January twenty-seventh to see what adjustments needed to be made. On January twenty-eighth, the day after I met with Mr. Green and informed my staff of the move to elections, they all, all of them had safety concerns and security issues. I memorialized that in a memo, sent it out to the relevant parties, and did not hear any response. So, I tried to put it on last agenda, and I did not follow protocol, so shame on me. Friday, this, this past Friday, I learned elections and senior citizens were not moving locations. About three fifty, I received a call from the county administrator, Mr. Baker, and saying that there had been a, I'm sorry, a message, saying that there had been a change of course, and that I needed to get with Scott Green as soon as possible, because there's been a change in course, and the county has already engaged an architect to help with internal design, and we needed to get on it as soon as possible. Although the location was not mentioned in that message, I'm assuming it's off-campus since there's nowhere to transplant our office on campus. If my understanding is correct, the ARPA funds for, in particular, the DA's office, is that in here, nine, is it nine? It's nine? Ten? Created ten positions in the DA's office. I myself have received, although a couple resumes, I myself have not received any viable candidates to fill our attorney positions, which are permanent, and neither have my cohorts in the other counties. And I don't know if Mr. Rollins is having that problem or not.
I filled six of the ten, or filled more investigator, but not attorneys.
Not attorneys, yeah.
Neither one of our offices can, are true.
Right, and that's, and that's an issue. So, the other positions are pretty easy to fill, but the attorney slots are just... So the other positions are pretty easy to fill, but the attorney slots are just incredibly hard at this point because everybody's getting to work from home and do whatever they want at home. Anyways, so these ARPA positions are renewed yearly up to three years. Chief Bee, Chief Judge Beavers has space that's rarely used on the third floor that could temporarily accommodate these ARPA-funded positions, and that's my alternative that I can give to the commissioners. Due to these reasons stated above, the public defender's office for the Paulding Judicial Circuit is strongly opposed to moving to an unsecure location off-campus. Thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you. I think it'd be very valuable to, to be able to expound on both the last two, both the speakers today, but we don't have any agenda item prepared to go through that, so I just want to say I appreciate your coming, both from the senior center, these two speakers, although you probably haven't been able to put the puzzle together, are related, and so appreciate both of y'all speaking today. So let's see, any comments from commissioners, any announcements you'd like to make?
Well, I would just like to say, when these two buildings were built, and they're not that old, I think they were built in two thousand, they were moved into in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, they're not that old, but they weren't prepared for future growth, and that's what we need to know, is we need to prepare for future growth. This is just one thing that wasn't prepared, and irregardless of what people think, we are out of room, we're out of room in both places because of not being prepared for future So thank you, Angela, for coming up, I know it took a lot for you to do that.
Thanks, Andy. Any other comments?
No, I just wanted to thank all the fire department for coming out to support those gentlemen, and the sheriff's office also, just, it's good to see our public safety and the light that it is. I'm gonna tell you something, and all the negative things you may see on social media, if it's something about public safety, man, there, everybody's for public safety. You guys do an outstanding job with little resources, and we appreciate you.
Well, on a lighter note, you know, every day's not, well, every day is Mother's Day, right, Tabitha? But Mother's Day is really the eighth of May, so, you know, start buying your gifts now. My mom is ninety-five years old and she lives in Uldoaw, Tennessee, in a senior living facility called the Garden Plaza, and she watches our presentations because they are live-streamed. So hi, Mom. And we thank, again, our public information team who, back in the back, who always record this and then show it, and I asked Jeff Harkins right before this meeting, how many people actually watch, and he said, well, your last meeting, it was a thousand and seven. So we're always glad for the work that his team does. So we need to go into executive session for real estate, and I'll entertain a motion, the purpose of that is real estate, so, here, motion.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for real estate.
Motion by Commissioner Stover, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Kecrowell, is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned for executive session. Okay, we've completed the executive session and we'll come back into regular session. No action was covered in the executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Stover, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Dunn, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.